You know, right?
Takes me back.
Welcome to this regular meeting this Wednesday evening, June 5th, 2024. I now call us to order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Giovanna, please call the roll.
I would be happy to, Chair Fields. Youth Commissioner Johnaker?
Here.
Commissioner Trapp?
Yeah.
Commissioner Chiapi?
Yes.
Vice Chair Witcher?
Here.
Chair Fields?
Here.
Thank you. We do have a form for this meeting.
Excellent. So as is the tradition for the last several years, we are holding meetings in hybrid mode. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. At the, uh, for those of you here at the meeting, uh, please complete a request to speak form and submit to the recording secretary if you want to speak, that's Giovanna. Uh, for Zoom, please join the Zoom meeting, uh, by clicking the link on top of the agenda, use the raise your hand button to be called upon at the appropriate time or times. Please unmute yourself only when called upon. Phone-in participation can be done by calling 408-638-0968 with the conference ID 878-9366-2121 and the passcode 624113. Again, as we've been doing now for quite some time, press star nine to raise your hand, uh, to be called on and star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close public comment. So now you all hopefully are very familiar with how to do this. Now we will move on to the consent calendar. There's been one item on the consent calendar, which is approval of the minutes from the May meeting. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Still moved.
Second.
Excellent. Giovanna, please call the roll.
I'd be happy to, Chair Fields. Vice Chair Witcher? Commissioner Trapp? Commissioner Chiapi? Chair Fields?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries four zero.
Excellent voting, everyone. Okay, so next is public comment. This is non-agendized public comment. Um, and I will read to all of you some information about how that's meant to go. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the commission at this time. California law prevents us from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Therefore, your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later in the agenda. We welcome speakers, uh, providing public comment, but please be advised, this is a limited public forum. As such, speakers must stay on topic if speaking to a particular agenda item. We'll get to that, uh, later. But again, this is the Parks and Recreation Commission, so we'd hope that you'd have something related to that if you're making a public comment. Do we have any public comments either here, uh, with us in person or on Zoom?
We do not have any hands raised or any members of the public.
Okay, very good. Uh, it seems like no one's changing their mind here and I, we're going to assume that on Zoom, everyone understands, uh, what was just offered. Okay, so with that, we will move on to new business. Which is Age, Age Friendly Business Certification Pilot Program Feedback. We have a staff presentation and I'll just remind everyone, this is an informational item where we will be asked to give feedback. There's no formal vote on this item. Uh, but we do of course look forward to hearing all about it and, uh, having an active discussion and question asking after staff's presentation. So with that.
All right. Well, thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Stephanie Nugent. I am a Community Services Section Manager here in City of Sematell. I'm joined by Jennifer Chang, who is our Economic Development Manager, and I'll be presenting tonight on our Age Friendly Business Certification Pilot Program. Next slide. So before I get into that particular program, I just wanted to do a little bit of background and, uh, history on what is Age Sematell Age Friendly Plan. So in November of 2020, the City of Sematell was designated as an age-friendly city for its commitment to being welcoming to older adults. In November of 2022, the city submitted its Age Friendly Action Plan to the AARP. And the action plan is essentially a roadmap to completing identified projects selected by our Age Friendly Task Force, which is a group of older adults who came together and made recommendations on what should be on the action plan. And so now we're kind of in the middle of it between 2022 and 2025, we're implementing these, uh, action plans that are in the plan. Next slide. So a couple of these items that are in the action plan, this is not all of them, but I did want to highlight a few of them. It's really increased, increasing scam presentations. We know that's a big issue, especially with older adults, uh, with providing fraud. So we've had a partnership with the Sematell Police Department and also with the county to prevent, present more, uh, presentations. We actually have one coming up June 20th at the senior center. And, uh, we've gotten some really good feedback from this and we're also putting out more information on our social media and our website to, uh, inform people about what the current scams are in the, in the area. Next slide. Uh, another item is prioritizing safe walking routes. So this is really about preparing tripages. And what the Age Friendly Task Force did is they identified sidewalks that are near, uh, long-term care facilities or areas that are frequented by older adults. And so public works went ahead instead of prioritizing, making those walkways a little more safer by grinding them down and, uh, like I said, getting the tripages. And this, I noticed MAP doesn't really capture it all, but they did focus on north central, north shore view and part of tour view and part of the central neighborhoods. So you know, this is an ongoing project, uh, that they've been working on. Next slide. Um, similar, but not exactly the same, is our sidewalk poking enforcement. So we find that a lot of times people poke on the sidewalk and it makes it difficult if individuals are using walkers or wheelchair. So what we did is not we actually, I don't want to take credit, but what the police department did is, uh, they went ahead and started doing, uh, kind of informing people of what the legal requirements are when you're poking on the sidewalk by putting out social media posts, putting out flyers and information to neighborhoods when it's becoming a real issue. And then they started doing the enforcement and you can kind of see from 2021 to 2022, they gave out 581 poking citations. And then after they implemented this plan, they actually increased the number of violations to 1,196. So again, we don't want to violate people, but we want people to know that if they are doing this, there are consequences. Next slide. And, uh, the last thing I'll talk about is the upgrade of our senior center communal areas. If you have not been at the senior center in the last year or so, please drop by. We've updated our front desk, we've updated our sitting areas. Uh, obviously seniors like to come and enjoy our center and relax and read books and play games. So we really wanted to make sure that this area felt, uh, welcoming, maybe felt like your living room as opposed to feeling industrial and unwelcoming. So there were just some examples of some of the things that are in the action plan. And what I'd like to do a little bit more of a deep dive on is our Age Friendly Business Certification. So this came out of, again, the Age Friendly Task Force, really wanted to, uh, create a program where, um, we really promote businesses that are age-friendly. And also educate older adults on what businesses are out there that are catering for them. So the Age Friendly Task Force did the initial research and preliminary business outreach. So they really went out to find out what, uh, other agencies and cities have done. And then they kind of came up with the initial framework for it, which I have to give lots of credit for them. They did a lot of the hard work. So we appreciate that the task force worked on that. So from the, uh, Parks and Recreation has placed this item on our work plan and we're collaborating with the city manager's office to get this pilot up and running. So what I'm hoping to get from you tonight is some feedback on the initial, uh, application. I will say we've already presented it to the Senior Citizens Commission a few weeks ago and they've provided some great feedback and we've already implemented some of that feedback. So as I go through this application, hopefully Jennifer and I can both kind of comment on a few of the things that the Senior Citizens Commission commented on. And, um, my hope is just if you see something that you think might need to be updated or changed or whatnot, let us know. Um, and so I think Giovanna could have, I noticed she's hard to read, so we're going to put it up in a different, uh, format. We'll get to these later. These are. Any questions about the Age Friendly Action Plan while we're waiting to pull it out?
We're supposed to do public comment first and then do questions from the commission. So this is not the most formal of commissions.
All right. So here we go. So, uh, first you want to make this a fillable, fillable criteria form, something that's easy for businesses to complete. So we can email it out, they can just type it on in. Uh, you know, basic standard information, uh, we start off with a very brief introduction, um, to, uh, what the program is. I will say that the idea being that once a business becomes age-friendly, they would get a window decal that they could put on their business storefront. Or if they're not an actual, uh, you know, brick and mortar, they could put it on their website. Um, and from there, we would also put them on our website to promote them as an age-friendly business. Um, so obviously in order to give you that, we need to get some initial information. So we have the business name, if they're doing a business, uh, DVA. You can scroll down, uh, phone number, email, website, all the basic information you need to spec. We're also asking to select what, uh, business type they are, service, retail, restaurant, or other. And if they are on others, they can obviously put in what, what category that might be. So eligibility is that, um, if you're in more than one location, each location has to apply separately. And you will see in the Age Friendly Business Certification, they have to be basically located in the City of Sematell and have a valid non-expired business license. And if the business is sold or transferred, recertification is required. I will mention, because this is a pilot program, we are testing things out. At this time, we don't have a plan for recertification. Uh, that may come after we complete the pilot and see what the interest is and see, um, how the process goes. But right now, the idea is that you're certified, so we certify until we determine if recertification is needed. Uh, and then application, to apply, you just have to complete the checklist and I'm going to go through that in a minute. And a statement of commitment. Satisfied a number of criteria, um, provide us a logo so we can help promote the website and then submit the application to Jennifer who will then take it from there. So getting into the meat and potatoes of the application, and this is really where we're hoping to get some feedback from. So the first, uh, category that we have is the exterior environment. And I hope we, uh, businesses can meet at least four out of six categories. One thing I want to mention with this that came out of the senior, uh, commission meeting was, um, you know, whatever business just cannot meet that threshold, um, for whatever reason, right? Uh, in a way, if a business to truly be age-friendly, they would have to meet at least four of these, these kind of viewpoints. So, um, if you have a business that is let's say on a really high floor, doesn't have an elevator, poor lighting, um, it may not be age-friendly and there might not be much they can do about it at that point. But the idea is again to make sure we business it are age-friendly. So, um, areas that they need to, uh, meet is poking and drop off areas nearby and who is designated as acceptable parking spot. Streets are, are well lit, sidewalks and walkways are well maintained and free from obstructions and tripages. Main entrance is clearly marking while let, storefront and entryway are clear, ramps and elevators are available as alternative to stairs or steps. So as you can see, most of these items, if you're an older adult or if you have mobility issues, these are going to be pretty pivotal to be, um, age-friendly for you. And then we also will be accepting businesses that might not be brick and mortar. So we do have the option to put NA if you're not, if your website's age business or whatnot. Uh, interior environment, very similar, talking about, uh, stairways and stuff, cabin railings, doors are easy to open. Um, entrance and elevator doors open and closing at appropriate speeds. I don't know if you've ever been in a building where the door closes right when you're walking in. Not the best for, uh, being age-friendly. Uh, backroom crystals that have easy to maneuver doors, locking mechanisms. Seating that can accommodate wheelchair and have a courtesy notice. Um, areas are well lit throughout, ambient noise level for normal conversations. Uh, flooring is a non-subterranean, aisles and walkways ample space for wheelchair navigation. And again, at least five of these, we know businesses might not be able to hit all nine, but the more, the better and at least five. And again, NA if they are not a brick and mortar. So, not, not communication, but this is really focusing on how do we connect to older adults. So business hours and phone numbers that you can read and find. Our older adults are celebrated with special discounts, shopping times, events. Businesses easily reached by telephone. Business intenting mentions that they did not discriminate on the basis of age or ability. Business supports sponsored senior organizations, activities, hosting of events, maybe providing meeting spaces for older adults. Our websites and printed materials such as signs, menus, and vouchers are vision-friendly with large fonts, high contrast, colors and background. And telephone answering service messages, instructions during a slow, clear manner and explain how to repeat the message at any time. And again, we're looking for four out of seven for this category. Uh, employees. So we also want to make sure these businesses are being age-friendly, whether it's, uh, to further employ or recruitment of employees. So employees provide friendly respect for, um, patient services for older adults. Uh, business provides specialized services for older adults. Um, business implements measures to prevent age bias and discrimination. Our business actively recruits to hire older adults and retirees. Business offers, uh, retirement transition support and business foster inclusive leadership and a, a culture of inclusivity and respect from the top down and listen to concerns of employees of all ages. Again, three out of six for this is. So other, uh, best practices, this obviously doesn't cover anything. There may be things that businesses are doing that we haven't thought of. And this is kind of what we kind of, uh, consider like the bonus area where businesses can put down things that we are not captured in the application. So we have all these criterias. Now one. So if someone fills out an application and submits it, the next step will be, we have a group of volunteers who are older adults who will go and visit the establishment or if they're an online establishment, they'll go ahead and go to the website. And they're basically going to do a, uh, uh, an inspection. Uh, and now again, I mentioned at the beginning, this is more about education. So this isn't a, they go and do an inspection and they put a big West X through them and, you know, kind of mapped it. Um, you know, if they go and they see that there's certain things that they mark that isn't accurate or if they see things that they could do to be more age-friendly, that's really where dialogue and a conversation can take place. Because our hope is that these businesses will have the senior volunteer go to the business and be able to enlighten them and give them additional information. Um, so the volunteer will go out, check it out, and then we'll report back to Jennifer and let her know if it's good to go. And if so, um, you can go ahead and make them a certified age-friendly business. Um, and we do ask that the businesses do sign a commitment form, acknowledging that they will continue their efforts in being age-friendly. And I think that's the last page. So I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer. I feel like I've been doing a lot of talking, just in case you have anything you want to add.
Again, I just wanted to share again, jumpstart. This is about raising awareness for seniors, about comfortable places that they want to participate. It's also kind of working with the businesses to highlight how our community really cares about our senior citizens and they are a valuable, uh, part of potential, uh, market for you. And have them also recognize that. And that's where we're do, making this effort. So it's, we're not enforcing anything, but we are trying to raise the words, um, both the seniors and the businesses to let them know these businesses are, are particularly adaptive for your needs.
And so for our pilot program, we're hoping to recruit between 20 and 25 businesses. That's really kind of our goal.
Yeah. I have some for what, nine month period? Cause it's a couple of months for them to apply. They're not just, you have to talk to, I'm going to have to talk to everyone and encourage them on what it is. What does it mean? They're going to ask me questions like, what happens if I, you know, things change? So there's a lot of handholding with all of this.
And we'll start off with a small subgroup and we'll see how the pilot program goes. And from the, I know you've been a lot, I would say from the senior commission meeting, they had a lot of great ideas about some long-term things. Uh, things such as doing workshops for seniors to feel more comfortable about going to downtown businesses. Um, I don't know, you know, if any of you've used parking meters lately where you have to use your cell phone to, to pay for it. That can be very intimidating for a lot of people. So providing trainings, um, Safeway, all of the coupons are now on an app. And if you're an older adult and you're not using a smartphone, that can be a real challenge and a hurdle. So there could be some educational opportunities for older adults and then vice versa, providing workshops for businesses so they can be, um, become even more age-friendly. And, uh, perhaps having a training component. So I think there's a lot of big ideas that we hope to address down the line, but it not, but won't happen right here in this pilot program because we really want to test the water before we jump into the, uh, deep end. So if we can get back to the PowerPoint. The other part of your presentation has to do with another, um, which we, uh, had a, uh, in-house designer do for us. And these were some of the samples that were given. Uh, and you can kind of see, they're all very similar, but they're all a little bit different. Uh, one of the things that came out of the senior, uh, commission was they didn't like the word certified. They felt like it was more important to really emphasize the age-friendly as opposed to the certified. Um, so if we go to the next slide. This is actually the logo that the senior commission selected. Um, so again, you can see what they liked about it was the fact that it was pretty simple and straight to the point. So you're Sematell, age-friendly, check business. Um, that being said, we, we want to hear more feedback. So, um, if we can go back to the other slide, we'll keep that up there for you if you all to look at. Um, and that, I believe, concludes our presentation. So we're opening up to public comment and.
Excellent. So first of all, Jennifer and Stephanie, thank you very much for this presentation. I will open public comment. I will remind everyone, if you are on Zoom, please use the raise your hand function and when you're called upon, please unmute yourself. Giovanna, do we have any in the, in the room comment cards or Zoom hands raised?
We do not have any members of the public at this time.
I thought you might say that. Um, then with that, I will close public comment and I will ask the commissioners if they have any questions or comments. We'll take them all together. Um, let's start with Vice Chair Witcher, if you'd like to take us off.
Sure.
You can say no if you want, but you look, okay, you look ready. Great. Kick us off.
Far, far be it from me to ever turn down an opportunity to ask a question.
Excellent.
I'll, I'll start the, the easy one. Thank you. Great presentation. Uh, and it's a fantastic topic. Uh, on the logo. I, I was going to choose the one on the lower left for exactly the reasons you said. So that's easy. So, uh, enough said there. The, um, uh, first a background question. Putting myself in a business person's shoes and seeing that one of the goals here is to entice and enlighten, I think the word was enlighten. Uh, businesses to the potential of, uh, supporting our, our senior residents.
Raise awareness.
Raise, raise awareness.
Yeah.
I think one of the, uh, big factors the business will consider is how much more business is this going to bring me? When the, uh, senior volunteers go out and speak with these businesses, will they be armed with some data to show, look at this market?
Well, that's something we can definitely look at providing them, um, about the median age in Sematell, population density of ours. The, the, the age distribution, how there is a large senior population over 60, um, or significant enough and around, especially around the downtown, something we can do.
Yeah. Terrific. So I think the, the businesses will be looking for, what's the benefit? Why, why should I? And they'll, in their hearts, they'll be thinking, I really want to, to help seniors. But as a business manager, they're going to be thinking, okay, how does this help me when I run a business?
We're also hoping that the application could first allow us to find the businesses that the application simply enough, the businesses who are already catering to a large percent of our senior populations and who are already popular with the senior populations can just make some slight tweaks and meet the criteria.
Mm-hmm. Do the, do the businesses get any, uh, benefit from the city such as advertising on a city website?
That's one of the things that we're going to work on. They'll get a decal and then we'll do like a little, probably a directory online to have them, um, labeled or kind of, uh, listed as an age-friendly business. And, and they will also be promoted through our Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Association.
Great. Yep. Maybe, maybe some, uh, notices in the senior center for a lot of seniors.
And I was just going to note that word of mouth advertising is probably the most effective. And this group of people who have helped put this together, our volunteers, our task force, they, they will, I think they want this to be successful. So I, I believe when they go out and do, and, you know, I'll say inspection for lack of a better word, um, they're going to spread the word and, and help us get, get the businesses, uh, the business that they want.
Are nonprofits eligible for this?
They're serving the seniors that count. It's a business.
Yeah. So I think, um, Samaritan House, for example. That kind of nonprofit goodwill, they serve a lot of seniors. And they probably know the market extremely well. They'd be, I would think receptive to any kind of help promotion.
Yeah. I think sometimes it's all about just finding the right person who's willing going, who's willing to work with me because they, they may not feel comfortable on a, on a manager level to sign anything. There's always a lot of handholding with all this.
Definitely. Um, those were all my questions. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Trapp?
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Wonderful presentation. Um, so I'm going to follow up on two points. Um, so one on, uh, searchable-ness and, uh, the, the potential places that people would want to go to get like this is certified. Have you thought about also including things like the Better Business Bureau, if people are still using that? And then Yelp, having a categorization on Yelp searching, maybe reaching out to them to have, uh, searchable senior certified areas.
That's a really good point. I've never seen Yelp have that, does have that type of.
I, yeah.
Um, but I'm happy to reach out to see if the, uh, Yelp does that. I have not seen.
I don't, I haven't either. I think this bringing this to them would, uh, you know, increase an area of categorization that they could add to their searchability for them.
That's a really, that's a really interesting idea.
Another one on the data reporting. So what on in-house are you going to be doing for the effectiveness of the program? I know you said he, uh, you showed me a wonderful point of providing them with data, but what are we going to be doing to track the effectiveness of the program internally?
I think for first round, we're going to go through the first 25 applications to see the application itself is, um, going to be encouraging for businesses to apply because I, I'm hoping that the first 25, they go through it pretty smoothly, then we can push it out more generally and then I, then we can start tracking like how, how quickly does it take to get certified and for different types of businesses. But right now I need some tangible, um, sort of real world, um, experiences, making sure the businesses want to, not just want to, but, uh, feel the comfort, the application itself is not cumbersome or hard or difficult to meet the standards that we've created.
And as you kind of get this palette of the 25 or so, when they get some data back, that. And as you kind of get this pilot of the twenty-five or so, when they get some data back, that now helps you to market to the next twenty-five.
Yeah, and also once you start seeing your neighbors, like if there's a dry cleaner that has it, well, then I want them to.
Um, a couple more questions. Um, any, I didn't see on your requirements, uh, anywhere that would be. They offer hearing or sight aids at their, at those sites? So another thing that would be maybe sort of, do you offer enhancements for seniors at your site for reading or hearing? I think that would go a long way for those who do have those. Um, and then that would be another reason for people to traffic that area. Um, and I think my last question was, you had mentioned um in your early presentation. Uh, the city kind of going out and grinding down trap hazards to kind of make the work.
Yeah, that was through public works.
Okay, is there any um uh notification of like a signs that are up that says we are. Gonna do something about it, or we have done something about it. So they get a little credit for the fact that there is a program to make that a smooth kind of passage.
You know, I believe when they were doing the projects, they put signage up to let people know what the projects are. Just like they do with most public works, who would help with most public work projects. I don't think there's any permanent signage that says, hey, we, you know, we may decide what we'll say. But um when they're doing projects, they do put signage up stating what the project is.
Kind of like a little thing on the side.
That's all. Oh, did you have feedback on the logo?
Oh, my logo. Um, I kind of like the one that have little.
Actually, maybe could we put them up on the screen?
It was bottom right, second from, yeah, I kind of like the circle with the age friendly certified, but. You know, I'm okay with whichever you said.
Thank you. Um.
Thank you. So thank you, Stephanie. Stephanie, Jennifer, what a presentation. I think this is a wonderful initiative. Um, I have maybe three questions. One is out of curiosity. You said that Task Force did some research on like cities that are implementing this. I was curious to. I was curious if you have any information on like how this has been a success in other cities.
You know that's been implemented in cities like Boston, Austin, in Chicago, they're not always done through the cities. They're often done through the Chamber of Commerce. I don't know the stats of like X number of businesses of that city that has age friendly. Often again, this is more about bringing awareness to businesses who are doing the right thing. Um, and bringing additional attention to those businesses, similar to like a green business um certification program that is also done.
One thing that's exciting is that I think we will be, in fact, I know we'll be probably the only agency in San Mateo County doing this. We, we've looked at other agencies, the task force, we're trying to find neighboring. And so we'll be the first one in San Mateo County.
Oh, great. And then my second question is about how you're going to find businesses to, to uh, to participate in the pilot. Is the task force gonna identify these businesses or like?
There were, because of some of their initial outreach, there were businesses that have very reached out to us as a list.
Yes, so we're looking emails already from businesses that are wanting to know when it's happening, uh, which is great. And I, like I said, it really goes to the task force that went out and started uh talking to businesses and trying to get information about how to implement this. Um, so I think that's gonna start, that start, start it running. Um, and then obviously we'll do social media, we'll do marketing. We'll work with the Chamber of Commerce to send something out. So we'll hopefully, you know, capture.
If we get more than twenty-five in the first round, that's great. But another goal is about twenty-five.
My last question is about, well, this is not a certification, but is there like an expiry date to a business being age friendly? And how do you determine that? Like, what if they pull out of the, like the compliance?
Yeah, I, I think it's sort of reporting. So other people reported that, you know, let's say they used to have a really easy, easily read board. And then they changed the whole menu and it's only on a QR card. And they're going for the sleek minimalistic look. And they don't, and they change several of the business operations. And someone reports it to us and we'll have to go back and say, hey, you don't qualify for these reasons. Do you want potentially change some of your operations to make sure you remain qualified? So it's, it's based on self-reporting.
Thank you.
Commissioner John, any questions?
Um, I have one question. Uh, thank you Stephanie and Jennifer for the awesome presentation. Um, I had one question. So let's say like um, some businesses, they, they, they wish to be age friendly, but they don't have, let's say like. Location wise, they don't have like um. But let's say they're like lacking in some of the requirements. Is there a way that um. The agency can loan them money for them to fit these requirements or not?
There's no incentive for them to become age friendly.
Okay.
And I, I would say again, this is raising awareness. So hopefully we've created this balance of. Criteria where we didn't make it so burdensome for the businesses. To make it impossible for them to reach that goal. And we're saying, staying true to our seniors. That these age friendly seals, decals, logos mean something to them. I would say that business is not clean, slippery, doesn't have a clear kind of outside format. Maybe they shouldn't, maybe they should have a change of business and you operate in common.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Um, do you want to weigh in on the logo? And I realize also. So let's hear from Commissioner John, John Lecarre, and then we'll come back to Commissioner Chiapu.
Okay, I like the um, the top left or like. In like that first column right there, um, all the way to the left, I like those ones the most mainly because they're like most easily readable. Which, like, the other ones, like, I feel like the message is kind of getting lost, like all the circles and. Um, I, I feel like if you're trying to go for something that's like easily readable, I would, the first column one is.
Yeah, um, I like the one the Senior Citizens Commission selected. Because uh, um, you mentioned that the goal is really to raise awareness and not necessarily to like set us standard. So yeah, the age friendly works, I think.
Balance. We don't want, we don't want seniors go in and they're like, this is definitely not age friendly.
Um, okay, I do have a, a few questions and points to clarify. Um, so in the section on exterior environment. Um, some of these feel pretty subjective. Um, and I, I'm wondering, I mean. I, listen, some of them are yes or no. ramps or elevators, like you have it or you don't. Great. Um, and some of them. You know, the business would need to be hopefully consistent on like, the entryway is clear. That's like good maintenance. So, okay. Um, in particular, the word that really sticks out to me is nearby. Um, could we, I would recommend defining what nearby means, particularly when thinking about our downtown businesses. Um, because my definition of nearby and. Like, okay, my father is seventy-two. He's a senior and he thinks a half mile is nearby, but I imagine not every senior agrees with him. Um, so thinking about what nearby maybe means. Um, and may, maybe you say a five-minute walk. And so then it's still subjective because my five-minute walk isn't everyone's five-minute walk. I don't know. It's just, I don't have a specific recommendation here, but I just think nearby is very vague and probably could use. A, a hint more specificity. Um, let's see, what else did I write? Um, I would just clarify that accessible means like an ADA parking space again, like, and. This goes back to what is nearby. Um, I'd also love to see, I, I think four out of, uh, four out of six is correct. Like in terms of meeting the criteria, although I would love to add a seventh criteria to this category and ask about transit. Um, and again, nearby would need to be defined, but I, but if there's transit nearby, especially because. Uh, SAM Trans and Caltrain are, I think, pretty accessible. Um, so I, I wouldn't want to raise the, the minimum. So I, I, if I, if I were adding the transit category, I'd, I'd make it four out of seven, but I think that's a nice category to add. Because it, it would include many of our downtown businesses. Plus, you know, in San Mateo, we have three Caltrain stations. We've got several active SAM Trans lines. Um, and, you know, for, for many people, especially more low-income seniors, that's how they're getting around. And um, just kind of thinking about that in the mix here. Um, I will say, I really, I'm excited to hear that you're, you're cross-promoting with the Chamber and the Downtown Business Association, or the Downtown Merchants Association. The Downtown Association has really, I think, probably with the hiring of their new director, really much more active on social media and just like building their presence. And so I think that's gonna be a really fruitful partnership. And uh, I'd encourage all my commissioners to follow them uh and just sort of be involved. Um, I, I'll also say, to whatever extent this commission can help promote uh recruiting the like senior volunteers. Um, to, to be active in this process, I would love to see that. Um, I know that our communication staff uh here in the city uh is active on Nextdoor. That there's kind of this like official sort of city Nextdoor channel. Um, and it's one of the few areas where I, I personally find Nextdoor to be a positive presence. Um, so to whatever extent, um, you know, that, that Nextdoor channel can promote uh the volunteers for this project. And then also, I do know, again, one of the other few positive presence uh on Nextdoor are local business promotions. And so thinking about, um, you know, making sure that the information is out on Nextdoor. And that, um, you know, like if you're having an information session or something that it's promoted um on Nextdoor. Because, you know, for a lot of local businesses, they are doing these really small, like geo-targeted um, uh ads on Nextdoor. Again, I think some of these are really subjective, but like, I don't know how you, you get much better. Like the questions around kind of like employees and staff, like I, you know, my, again, my definition of friendly and your definition of friendly might be very different. But um, you know, I, I think again, like having it, meeting at least half of these feels right. Um, I, I would echo Commissioner Trapp's um suggestion around um sort of broader access and employees. In terms of, you know, would an employee help you, you know, help carry things to your car or other things that um. Just sort of make it a, a more welcoming um and inclusive environment, just because uh. If you don't enumerate, then it's just, it's a bit big. Um. And I will say that I um. I like the logos that are to the left, uh, the, the ones that just sort of say age friendly business. Um, I will say, and I'm sort of sorry, but um, I think the checkmark is really. I don't know. I want to say boring, but I don't think that's quite, I think there could be something a little bit more dynamic um in terms of an image, like maybe a handshake. I don't know. I, 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 I would be interested to think about, uh, like I said, the ones on the left, I like because they're very clear, they're very easy to read. I, I think the idea of a pretty straightforward logo makes sense. A checkmark just feels um. A little flat to me. Um, so I, you, you know, if it could be a little more dynamic, maybe it's um. Maybe it's people, I don't know. Maybe it's a handshake, uh, just something a li, like I said, a little more dynamic, not like. Beyond sort of a more minimalist, you know, something you would find on a map, kind of of, of a logo, but or an, a, a D, you know, an image. But something, yeah, a little more, a little more pizzazz. Um. Yeah, um, great. So with that, I will turn it back to staff if you have any further comments or responses.
And Jeff and I have both been taking some uh notes here. I just didn't go to the logo, the checkmark. When we were looking at other logos that other uh age friendly businesses have done, that seemed to be the trend. But that being said, I agree, we can, we can look at it again and see what we can come up with. Um, and then in regards to, I agree that some of these, especially I want to really appreciate the comment about the uh transit and the nearby. That's something we can definitely look at and kind of fine tune a little bit. Um, and I think the, the premise is gonna be that when we have our volunteers going out and doing, checking out the businesses. Really make sure they're well-trained and they understand the purpose of the program. So that will hopefully eliminate where I think there are some variables and differences of opinion. Ultimately, the hope is that this business is really going out of the way to be age friendly and that we can help promote them for that. So, but no, I, the comments were excellent. So thank you. And well, we'll be taking a lot of this and hopefully fine tuning it and getting this out in the next uh. Couple of months. I was gonna say days, but I thought Jennifer would pass out. So we'll take a couple of months.
Jennifer, any, any words?
No, I'm excited to start on this. I think it'd be a really interesting project to see, right? Businesses start, uh, wanting to work with us.
Wonderful. And really, thank you for all your work on this. I think, you know, as, as you touched upon, you know, it's the city of San Mateo, all of San Mateo County, really. We're, we're an aging region and, you know, thinking about the ways in which um. You know, all people can access businesses and, and enjoy life here in San Mateo, I think is really important. And so again, thank you for your work and for this presentation.
Good, thank you.
Uh, and that takes us to reports and announcements. Marie, do you have any reports and announcements for us?
All right, we'll start with the annual park survey is gonna be posted next week and it will be out posted uh through Sunday, July seventh. Uh, summer camps and school are opening up on Monday, uh, June seventeenth. Um, for our month of July, July third would technically be our next meeting. It's canceled for the holiday. Um, interviews regarding the vacancy of the commission um will be happening soon and hopefully filled by August. Uh, more to come on that. Uh, and July is Park and Recreation Appreciation Month. So if you're able to attend the city council meeting on Monday, July fifteenth. There'll be a proclamation presented on that date for our staff. Upcoming events, this uh spring dance shows is gonna be the Sunday, June ninth at Central Park, uh outdoor stage starting at noon. The summer concert series uh starts June twentieth through August eighth. It'll be Thursdays at Central Park. And the Fourth of July celebration, eleven AM to two PM at Central Park, uh lots of different activities and a live band. Uh, craft started eleven o'clock and the event should conclude around. The middle of the afternoon, around two o'clock. So that's all I have for you guys. Lots of activities coming up.
Amazing. Um, do any of my fellow commissioners have an announcement, something they feel they should share in public record of this commission?
Yeah.
Yes, excellent.
So the uh Fallen Heroes Memorial was dedicated uh right before Memorial Day weekend. And it was amazing. It's fantastic. And I know that many of the staff members worked really hard to make it a reality and to make the ceremony a reality. And so kudos to everyone. And it's uh, it's a very moving, very appropriate memorial.
It's lovely, too. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Anything else? I'll just remind everyone, even though it's not an official city event, it will be in Central Park. This Saturday is San Mateo Pride. Um, the parade is at ten thirty and the festival is from eleven to five. Uh, it's a really lovely community event, family-friendly. Um, a lot of great community organizations, um congregations, service groups, all kinds of people. And, and just really, like I said, a lovely, lovely event uh in San Mateo. Uh, and if you haven't been to the Fallen Heroes, uh, you can also visit that while you're there. Um, and on that note, um, I don't see anyone else with a comment. So I will say, thank you for coming to this meeting. I will see you all in August. This meeting is adjourned.